I don't know if we need to change anything, but I think it should at least be noted, we should realize that A, B, and C under unfinished business pretty much all come together as one. The sidewalk, the lock, and the sign. It's all, I don't know if we want to make them all one or just...
I have no problem with that. Anybody have a problem with that? Will group B and C with A?
Yeah, we can talk about them all at the same time and then probably have to make separate motions.
Should add any other new business for additions? I'm sorry. That's, that's the one thing I want to ask you. Do you want to add this at this time if you're... Fine. Under new business, under letter K, if we could add senior coordinator position?
Question on new business, A. I thought we were going to try to discuss that a little bit. It's kind of hard to discuss it and make a decision at this meeting, especially since we have a closed session with one of the advocates later. I don't know how everybody else felt about it, but...
I'm, I'm sorry, did you get our new business?
Okay, township law firm selection.
Correct.
Okay, I thought we were going to try to meet and discuss different things about the different, the three interviews we did. That fell through last Wednesday, but I thought we were going to try again.
Not to my knowledge.
Because...
When I asked Treasurer, Clerk Keith, they said they did not need any discussion. I did not need any discussion. I don't, I can't speak for Trustee Boyd.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that. The only thing is, we have that and then later on in the closed session, we have a meeting with one of attorneys that had applied, so it's just kind of...
Correct. Well, he's handling that issue.
You've sent under Kate Wood, where's Jade? I don't have anything for Jade.
Advisory Committee for Policy Manual.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Could you hook, hook your mic up, please?
Can you hear me now?
I'm sorry. Or is there copies for it? I guess I do more. I just refer care, so, thank you. Did you have anything else to that, that you wanted to add other than that? Any other additions or deletions?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, combining A, B, and C, and adding K, senior coordinator.
Support. Thank you. Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Public comments. Also, if, it's all right, I, um, Littleson from Richmond Schools wanted to speak to us in a meeting that we didn't have, and I informed her this would be the best way to catch us all at the same time without posting it. She wants to speak regarding the millage proposal for the school. It's also...
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. I wanted to inform you that on May 7th, the Richmond Community Schools is going for a very basic bond proposal and that I hope that you'll look into. It covers three basic things. One is to upgrade our technology. Our backbone is getting quite aged and certainly not up to the needs of the district at this point in time with teachers being able to video stream and all the many uses that we have for technology. It also includes making our classrooms more consistent in terms of the technology that would be in the classroom, whiteboards, smart boards, that sort of thing, as well as one-on-one technology for our students. We feel that this is essential as we move forward for the future for our students to have that experience having at their fingertips either a laptop or a other type of device. The other, the next piece is enhancing our educational program. We need science labs that are ready for the future to prepare our students, and this would add four science classrooms to the high school off the wing where the, um, the gymnasium is and renovate science labs in the middle school. It would also add some band instruments and replace the track at the high school. The third part is maintaining our investment in the buildings that we have, and it would include things like replacing unit ventilators, which are original to the buildings, to make sure that we have heat in all the classrooms that's consistent, replacing six buses, five on the initial sale, and then one in seven years when we would be doing replenishment for technology and another bus, and then some additional security cameras and lock system on the entries. So that's kind of a quick overview and, and the time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. I put some flyers back on the back table, and if I could just leave a few with you.
The amount of the millions, I know I read about it, but I don't remember what...
Uh, the amount is 12.9 million.
You want to, you want to turn the mic so we can...
Sure.
Thank you.
It's estimated to be 2.2 mils or for a homeowner of $100,000 home, about $2.12 per week. On our website is a tax calculator, which a homeowner can go on and calculate out their own situation much more precisely. It would expire in '26 with our other bonds, so it's not a real long term. And it would include the initial sale and then a sale in seven years of the other part of the bond for replenishment of technology devices and, and another bus.
Any questions?
I want to thank you for coming in and explaining because I was going to announce the election on my report.
Oh, great.
So now I don't have to explain what it is.
Well, and if you are aware of other opportunities for me, please give me a call. I very much appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comments at this time?
Um, reading the minutes from last month, I noticed that regarding a new attorney, we had a resident who thinks we should hire an attorney from Macombe County. I understand that Mr. Javich, and I hope I pronounced her name right, um, has been, has done a very good job of stepping in and taking over the cases that Jared was handling when he was our attorney. I personally don't care where the attorney is from, as long as he is going to do a good job and work in the best interest of Lennox Township.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If you'd like to make a public comment. Could you go up to the microphone, please? At the mic, please.
My name is Al Gasco.
I don't think, should I, could you turn that on for Mr. Gasco, please?
I'm here now.
There you go.
Okay. I have similar comments on the law firm that we hired. Being a businessman, 40 years in this county, being in a lot of courts, um, I am definitely against my money and my debt. I believe we're all in business here, and my, my portion, my tax money, I want spent in our county. The gentleman could be the best attorney in the whole world, and I have no problem with that. I will help him get the job where he's from, but I'm, I'm very strongly feel that we need to hire within our county. It's, when I do all my shopping for businesses that I had, I did it all in Macombe County. There's a couple of things that I'd, I'd like to make note of as far as saving money. I, I looked at, I tried to study what, what the three law firms put together. Number one, if you'd do me a favor and put their applications up on, on the desk there where people can see them. The very first thing that I looked at was...
I can't move.
Number one, all, all three of these firms are, are applying for the same job, and all three of them are basically saying the same thing. The one thing that impressed me is one of the law firms could say it in a third of pages. That's, that's time, that's hours, and, and we as a county, as a township, will be built on the hours and the minutes. That caught my eye first, and, and second, really. Now, when I found out that one of them was from outside of Macombe County, 95 or 98% of your cases, it's going to go to court, it's going to go to Macombe County Court. It's known, it's a fact all over, when you gotta go to court, you want to have lawyers that are dealing in courts every day, part of the courts, tell the whole truth, go to all the parties and all the fundraisers within the county. That's just the way it is. That's life. Another thing that I noticed, so, truthfully, that's as far as I went with the law firm outside the county, because I feel very strongly. I, I tried a comparison between the other two to try and find if, if I was sitting in your seats, what, what I would do. The, one law firm has four attorneys, the other law firm has 24 attorneys. That's, that's a great plus to me because down the road from time to time, I know I've been involved, and I've had to have attorneys, hire attorneys, because they didn't have somebody in that specialty. The ones that was hired, ones I hired myself was expensive enough, but the ones that they hired was really expensive. So, to me, that's, that's a very big plus from, from four to 24. The, the firm with 20, with, with four attorneys has no landfill experience. We are probably landfill capital of quite a, quite an area. That, that was another big plus to me. The insurance that the two law firms carry, and, and I understand when, when the law firm is larger, you have, if you're smart, you carry more, more insurance. The one with 24 attorneys covered, has more than twice the insurance if we ever get into big problems. They, they also, and I, and it was the only one that I was able to find out, they buy their insurance in Macombe County. So they believe in spending their money in Macombe County. I, I don't want to take up all your time, I don't know how much time you want to give me, but I'm sure you want to shut me up pretty soon. But, uh, another thing that I noticed, and, and as far as running the business, is they, they offered a billing program that struck my eye, um, and I come in here and I asked about the amount of money that has been spent last eight or 10 years here. They're right on target. The pluses I see, I've been sitting here in the past and have seen conflicts on time spent on phones between you people on how much this phone call costs, that phone call costs. This billing, they're, they're willing to accept these phone calls without billing you for it, and that gives you the opportunity to use the law firm more often. When you have a question, you're not scared of coming back in and having your partners in here question the amount of time you've spent with your attorneys. To me, that's extremely important. The Rensilio firm is, that's, that's who I, I would pick if I were voting or if I was hired for this job. They have acquired $2,400,000 in grant money for other municipalities and such. I, I, I think, boy, do we need somebody that kind of background. They have, they dedicate eight attorneys to ordinance and code enforcement. Boy, do we need that. I almost got myself in a pickle trying to be a good guy here. We need somebody that needs to get this stuff cleaned up. It appears to me, and I didn't see it in, in the other resume, that they have quite a background in that. I, I could go on and keep going, but I think I've made my point. There's no sense of beating a bad dog. I, I wish you all the best luck, sir. I mean, I, just, you're from Macombe County, I'm sorry, and, and all of our stuff is going to be going to Macombe County Courts, and you need somebody in the know. That's, that's a proven fact, so, um, that's, I'm not going to bore you with any more of it, but you obviously don't know who and why I, I picked this lady.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Public comment, approval of minutes 24, 2013.
Cody, didn't you have a question on the, um, the appointment of a committee? Just happened to think about it, because don't we have to officially appoint a committee for the RE, for the REC board so that we can start applying for those grants? I found it in here, and it wasn't, it didn't, we didn't say, okay, we appoint a committee. It said this month, they intend to put together a part committee. Residents interested in being part of this committee should contact him, meaning Sir Med, Cam, and all them.
Trustee Boyd was involved in that. We actually, we met on the track, we started work on that. We haven't actually gotten to that far. Things have just been, not got to that point, but yeah, to get the grants, we do need to put together a committee. We just haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, because at the planning commission level, we were talking about it, and Pat Locker had mentioned that, yeah, he could go ahead and apply for some of these, but there's a deadline right now, and we have to, all we have to do is say that we have a committee, and that he can move to the next step. So if you have a committee and we can document it here...
I would create a temporary one, and he said...
Yeah, right. That's what, that's what we need, because it, there's a couple of grants that are, like, very imminent, and it's one we might be able to...
Well, I, I talked to him, that's where that came from, and he told me that he could do a couple of grants, and he was supposed to give me paperwork on them and then react from them. So I assumed he was still working on them, but we can absolutely, we can take the group that we have already, and we had one resident that, that was interested, and contact him, and I think that's a good idea, we'll just, that first together. Not working? Can you hear him? Doesn't, okay, can I, sorry. So, yeah, we can absolutely, we can do that this week. That's not a problem.
Okay, should we amend the agenda and add, um, REC committee formation or something, just so it's documented? It just has to be documented that there is a committee starting.
Well, that, or, or I can, I can contact that resident, and we can do mid-month. Either way, it doesn't matter to me. It was only one resident that showed interest, so, and that would be more than enough people. That would be myself, Cam, Ted.
Okay, yeah, yeah, just because I didn't want it to get stalled again, because like I said, these grants are imminent that we get them, so, okay, thanks. With that, I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 4th, 2013.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Church, supported by Treasurer, Clerk. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Mid-month business.
Um, the mid-month business, I think we just have the one, right? So I have here, um, we did hire a receptionist to fill the position that Robin Murphy vacated. We have not filled the position yet for the assistant to my office. We received 250 resumes, and it was just impossible to get through them all and to contact everybody, so we're going to do that. Hopefully this coming week, review some of the people that we had for interviews, bring them back. But this mid-month is for the receptionist position, and we did hire Veronica, I can't say it, Christowski.
I was glad you were going to say it.
Is from Richmond Township.
I'm showing one more also, too, that the, I don't know if you have this one about the outsourcing.
Give me a second. That's one of those that have given to us.
Both you signed, I did also.
The assessing department asked for, to, um, outsource the mailing, and the cost of the mailing actually was not much more than what the postage was going to be, so it was approved by three of us.
I do not have a copy of the sheriff's report. Fire department report.
Uh, we did receive the December...
You have the December one?
Sure.
Okay.
Be a email.
I did not receive the new one yet. I guess by the time they're gathering, and this is going to be an issue every month with the sheriff report, by the time they gather the data, we're always behind, so, I don't know if we just want to leave a copy of the last report we received up at the desk for anybody to, uh, look at.
As long as we state what month it is that's in the packets.
Chief, you said receiving file?
Please.
Thank you, sir.
I'll let you know.
Any other mess report?
Response report by email today, it was late in the afternoon, this is a very...
Okay, receiving file also. DPW report.
I'd also like to request that you receive a file, unless anybody has any questions, I think more than anybody else.
Any questions for DPW? Thank you, sir. Code enforcement report.
Received and filed, and Michigan Liquor Control Commission inspection forms were received for February.
Assessing department report.
Did anybody else want to? She mentions on here a full list of the entire tribunals. I'd kind of like to see that list.
I would like to see what the results are. I mean, it just says it's settled. I mean, settled could be we backed all the way down or we pushed it, so I have no idea if they're letting things just go as presented, or I would like to see some, some documentation showing what happened with it.
You mean if it was just a listing?
Right. I, it could be an email. I don't, I don't care, you know, what it is, but it kind of like, you know, if we're losing money or gaining...
There's some big ones right now that's going on. We're just settled with Myers, and they got it for not only 2012, but back 10 and 11, and there's some big dollars going. Some, some of our departments are going to get hit by that.
Yeah, but that's the thing, like, like, why, you know, why though? Because Myers is a profitable organization, so...
I guess they felt it was just, we know how the dollars...
We have to cover all the details with you, I'm sure.
Okay, that's fine. They're a big company, so, but I think if we ask, she would definitely give...
They're based on other, other Myers values...
Okay.
...within our region and how they determine value.
Ryan, could you get with the assessing department to say, ask her for some type of full list and a little bit more detail on it?
Sure. You know, also, too, I'd like to revisit the split combination procedure that we have in place, because I, I don't feel it's, it's working right. Would like to probably do that in one of our policy and procedure meetings over the process, because we have on there approved or denied, and in some cases written off the ban. For example, it doesn't meet our requirements, but it's approved by some departments based on different reasons, so there's, there's issues there we have to resolve.
That's fine, and that was the reason why I didn't think that we should just stop doing that, because the first thing that I'm supposed to look at is, and I did, and two of them, they were, they didn't follow our ordinances at all, so...
That's, personally, that's why I think we should leave it up to the assessor, have our input, but leave it up to the assessor after she gains the information from us, basically going to the treasurer, our taxes paid, going to the supervisor, are there any code enforcement violations? Going to the clerk, are there any ordinance violations that you know of or anything at that time? We assemble the information, give it to her, she makes determination based on the information. The other point is, you know, with all of us, is it one denial kills the whole process? Is it one approval?
Um, is it one approval? You know, that's where it's not perfectly clear, uh, in the process, so.
How, do we still do, uh, four or more splits goes to the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of the ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I didn't think we changed that, these are just lower than.
Plus, um, we, we had it today, where a gentleman said he went to multiple departments, and some people told him it was okay to do it, and this, if we limit it to one, get our input, but limit it to one, we know where the buck stops. You know, there will be no hearsay on this department said it's okay to do this, this department said, one department, that's where, where it lies, where all the responsibility lies. I, I think it'll, 'cause we had a heck of a thing today, where a gentleman had already spent, uh, money on a survey, had already purchased a property, he stated he was told things, so that will eliminate any, any question or any hearsay on all of that, if it came down to one person.
So, you what, you, you don't think we need to do that anymore?
I think we should have, on that sheet, it should have our input, just our, our comments, like we do have, but not whether we approved or denied. Per se, it can come back to us after her recommendation, if you want, but I, she has all the information at that point.
I understand that way.
In that way, it's not a headache to us, it's not whether or not, um, you know, there's, there's no personalities coming to play, whether we like somebody, dislike somebody, we can never say that, it's one person making the decision, based on our comments, based on her information, based on our, our split requirements.
So, basically, assessing department would, would take it in, and they would go to each department.
Yeah, the taxes paid, or, or code enforcement violations, anything that could hold up the process, once that information's gained, she makes the determination, meets our, you know, one of four requirement, or, or whatever split requirements we have, you know, the frontage versus ag versus residential, things of that nature, she, she has that all, all that information. She makes determination, it expedites the process, it's not held up on somebody's, somebody's department, and it gets done.
Right, and like you said, somebody didn't say, well, I think you can do that, or I, you know, I.
Well, they're not saying, you know, I went to this department, they said, it's okay to do this, you know, I went to this department, they told me there shouldn't be a problem here, it negates all of that.
Yeah, we don't need that.
And that's what happens, 'cause that's what you're told, and then, the ship to blame after somebody spent large, in this case, you know, close to $100,000, now they're looking for somebody to blame if it doesn't go right. So, we wanna make sure that we have a clear process, and the responsibility, I think, lies on one person in the end, not six or seven different people. Engineers report? What do you have, Sir Med's report? Fortunately, Sir Med couldn't be here tonight, he had an emergency meeting. Hope everything's okay with him, he never misses a meeting, so, hope everything's fine. Any questions regarding his report?
Um, it's kind of a, for him and for you, um, on the moochi group in the Michigan Meadows, are, are they paying, are they paying any fees yet?
No.
Because, are you, you and Sir Med gonna still meet with them, or?
Absolutely, I plan on it, um, I will tell you this, we have an opportunity to gain a development that could be in the neighborhood of 50 to 70 million dollars for our community. Myself personally, I feel if they call, and they need questions answered by an engineer to determine if they wanna come into our community, by all means, we should, we should bend over backwards, for any company, not, let alone 50 to 70 million, any company come, we should try and help them get into our community. That is gonna be spending some money upfront.
Right, but isn't the first step for them to talk to the planner and go guide through there, because it may be something that isn't allowed by our ordinances before the engineering area gets involved.
That's, that's on them to check it out, but I, I can tell you, that's one of Sir Med's purposes, to try and expedite or, or fill them in on things, to help get through the process. We can just, we can take the approach where we do nothing, and say, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to start at the beginning, go through everything, um, myself, I don't feel that's correct. When we get an opportunity, these businesses are not just coming here, you have to go out and get them, and they're, we're in great competition against every other community in the state, every other state in this country, they're looking at New Mexico, they're looking at other areas, I can tell you this, whoever the most helpful and shows them that they want them there, it's gonna be the path of least resistance, that's where they're gonna wanna go, that's what they're gonna wanna see. I have a meeting tomorrow with them, I'm going, I'm driving to Canada, again, just like when we had the initial letter, I could've mailed it to them, waited a week, I drove it to them, I hand-delivered it to them. I think we have to go out and get it, if we wait, somebody else will get it.
Yeah, something like that, but I, I don't wanna see us have, you know, 20, 30,000 dollars worth of engineering fees, and then if they decide not to, we're completely out.
And, and here's, I'll play double advocate, do nothing and get nothing. You take the chance of not, not helping them.
I know, but how far, how far are we, are we willing to go?
Within, within reason.
Okay.
This one has been going on for quite a while, and.
Yeah, I know.
Nothing has been presented to go to the planning commission, and the planning commission is the first step, so.
Well, I can tell you this, uh, they have given waste management a deposit for business in our area, and that's one of the preliminary steps. Um, they, I'm sure, don't wanna expose everything they're doing, but I can tell you, um, every week, I'm working with them, every single week, trying to entice them to come, trying to expedite the process, show them that we're willing to get any and all information they need for their project, whatever it takes.
Have you gone over it with, with the planner at all, or looked at, you know, has Sir Med looked at the ordinances, is this, whatever they're planning and doing there, is this something that is allowed without a major?
It's a major project, that's what I'll tell you.
Right, but a major impact, negative impact on residents, put it that way.
I can, I can, well, I can tell you this, it's next to the landfill, it's, it's, it's growing tomatoes, cucumbers, and peppers, so I don't see it as a negative impact at all. It's probably one of the clearest facilities I've ever seen, it's, it's like a medical facility. I can also tell you, Ted Wobbie's been involved, Mark Hackle's been involved, and they're all pushing for this to come, and we've been going up higher than that to try and get Debbie, Debbie Stavon involved, and I had the state involved, uh, through Governor Steiner's offices also, um, so it's something that we're working on, uh, very hard.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going, gonna be a negative impact on somebody after we've spent all this money, so.
If anything, it would be the most positive, positive impact we could have next to our landfill, we'd be utilizing some of their resources, um, for this new development, that would gain us tax revenue and hopefully jobs.
When are they planning on submitting to the planning commission?
No idea yet, they just got the other part done with waste management, and, uh, they're moving forward, that's what I can tell you.
Any chance that this company would come and meet with the board and let us know what they're about? I mean, I, I have heard very little about this, minimal.
I can ask them.
I would just, it would make me feel a little bit better, spending this money, if, at least the board, if they don't want the residents to find out real, you know, a lot, and I, it would be nice if they'd just come and speak to us, I, I would appreciate it.
I can ask them, I can ask them tomorrow, when I see them.
Yeah, 'cause I don't really know for sure, somewhat than that.
I would highly suggest we not stop what we're doing at this point, though.
That's all I have, a question on the one.
Okay, thank you.
Library report, receiving file.
Thank you. Just have one thing, um, like you said, I'll be going to Canada again tomorrow, we're working very hard on, on trying to make this happen here, and not only that, but a couple other projects that have been, uh, brought to my attention, that are just at the beginning stages, um, no disclosure yet on that, um, because of potential of property purchases, they want everything kept quiet right now, so it doesn't affect the value they'd be paying for properties. Would like to thank, uh, I think it was Beth Crawford, Jeanette, for the donation of the new tree for our township, I think you said she, remember that tree for 20 years or something? We have a new addition to, hopefully, we don't have to have the tape up there, we were having multiple accidents, so our, our seniors walking in and glass there, so, then, be able to take the tape down, so it only gets hurt, so, we wanna thank her for that donation. That's all I have at this time. Treasurer's report?
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Support. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries.
The total amount is 1,630,000, yeah, 1,630,695.83. This month, um, we have the North Grashit Interceptor payment, we also had the Oakland, Macomb Oakland Interceptor, and the Clinton River spillway payment, and that's why it's so large.
Okay, thank you.
Just a, uh, off-the-wall question, Jody, um, the tech company that we're using, is it, is it IT Right Incorporated? I just saw on Macomb Daily about, or it was the voice of a local company that's doing tech work, but I don't know if you've heard anything about it, or if they're as advanced with their work, is it something we can, you know, look into?
I actually have two things that I'm looking at right now to upgrade some of the, the stuff on the computer, one of them would be bringing, actually, uh, the website back in house, I was just talking to Chris about this, um, which would save us that, 'cause this particular billing, that's for the web, the web hosting and the emails, and so there are, like I said, there's a couple of things that I am looking at to replace this and update, uh, some of the programs that we're using.
Yeah, I can't even think of offhand, I can't think of the name of the company, but it was a, like, a family company that was started, the way they're out of our made-up, I'm not sure, and they go, they come right to you, so I don't know if they do just households, or if they would do, you know, businesses if they're that large, so.
Macomb County uses Google Labs, it uses everything Google, uh, Microsoft has also come out with a new one that is this type of, like, Google, um, so, we're in the process right now of, um, looking at both of those, testing them, and this is being done through high-tech, they're looking at the Google Labs, I'm looking at the other one, and so, either or of them has the web hosting included, so, that's to come in the next couple of months.
I'll see if I can find that article, and I'll get it for you, thanks. I didn't catch the full, all, all the numbers, Jody, so, it's gonna make the order.
Bet you handed it back to me.
Okay, all the numbers to the zero. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the orders and bills, the amount of 1,630,695.83.
Support. Thank you. Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Deputy clerk, roll call, please.
Churchy?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Hockner?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Trustees' report, trustee Churchy?
Um, the only thing I have is the planning commission, uh, at the planning commission level, we, uh, approved the annual renewal for special anniers permanent strategic, after many questions, um, and the planner is still coordinating the training, which I guess we're gonna talk about later tonight anyway, so, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Boyd?
Um, I went to our 50 acres landfill this month, very interesting, if anybody gets a chance to stop by there, they'll give you a tour, very educational, surprising what they do there, um, I really enjoyed it, they actually have a 100 acre wildlife sanctuary that wraps around part of it, it's, uh, really quite an operation, and I, uh, just wanted to thank Chief Wu Shae, he, uh, invited Jamie and myself to go to the chief's banquet, um, great night, uh, they, and fire was given, and, uh, they had the outer guard there, and, you know, for the fallen firefighters, for the, for the year, and it was, it was a bit emotional, but it was, it was a really nice evening, and we really appreciate it, we had a good time. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention was, I talked to Mr. White last year, Jeff White, about a CPR class, I know, and you had brought it up when you were doing interviews, um, talking around to some of the employees here, they, they tried to remember, they think it was actually in the old building, the last time it was passed out, so, I, I really think it's something that we should look into scheduling very quickly here, and Jeff said that, no problem, we can do pretty much whatever's convenient for us, so, I really think that's something we need to look into.
Absolutely.
As quick as possible.
And, and then, could we have a, a refresher course on the EED?
No, we don't come with it. I, I really, we have.
I think that was the last course we had.
We have a lot of instructors, uh, it's, it's simple, it's incumbent upon somebody here, kind of take the bull by the horns, pick a date, give us a time, it'll take about two hours to get through the refresher, and, uh, just let us know what you have, and we'll be here.
Thank you, thank you. Also? Thank you. Clerk's report?
Well, as Linda Olson stated, we have a school election, school village election on May 7th, and the clerk's office is already in the process of, um, sending out absentee applications and getting that all rolling. Also, I've been in contact with the planner about the, uh, updating the website with the new improved zoning book, and he's working on that right now, he was trying to get it, um, formatted correctly to get it up on the website. In the meantime, I put a disclaimer on the website stating that the ordinances that are out there may not be the, the most up-to-date, and so to please check with the office, but I didn't wanna just remove it all, because then we'd be, we'd be getting phone calls from, from people that just wanted to look at something, and not necessarily move forward with anything. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Make a motion to receive and file all reports?
Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by treasurer Hockner. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carries. Unfinished business. Letter A, Macomb County Sheriff's Department Substation Sidewalk, Township Office North Entrance Directional Sign Request, and Office North Entrance Black Request. These all go hand in hand, so that's why they're all grouped under A. Um, I didn't get a call from shift commander regarding the entrance that they are using now, um, because of the snow piles, and because of the flooding over there, um, they were not able to use it, they were still trying to use it, he asked me if there's anything we can do, um, I told him, this was coming up on our next meeting. Jeanette, I think also, too, we had a discussion with our deputies, what they're stating, and what the shift commander stating is, what they would like from us is a sidewalk from the parking lot to the door. They wanna continue parking that area, um, they, they really don't wanna use the, the main entrance or the employee entrance over here, they would like to use the entrance closest to their office right there, and would just like a, a sidewalk installed.
I contacted, uh, Porus Pave, and he came back, he finally got back with me, and he did give a quote, and this is for the actual horse pavement, complete, finished, $10 a square foot, which came to about $3,000, and Cam, I meant to grab last month's quote, and I forgot, did you remember, like, 2,100?
It's 2,100 I have over here.
So, obviously, they, they beat that, or. So, obviously then, they, they beat that without a problem. That kind of puts the porous out. You know, I, I know it's an added expense, but, uh, in, in my opinion, we should have always had a sidewalk. We have a door there, an entrance there. There should always, should have already been a sidewalk going to the parking lot from that, from that spot.
Okay, and I know there's a big difference of the, the amounts, but what would be the lifespan of, of paved sidewalk versus the pores because of so, so much moisture over there?
The porous pave that they're using right now, that they just started using, they're estimating a lifespan of 20 years.
Cam, do you want to address that?
What they did, what, what I, what I've heard, and I think Cam was one of those that mentioned it, and Sir Med was, there's also the cost of, it has to be cleaned. They have to actually vacuum it out once a year. And I don't know what that's all about. Actually, the gentleman is, wants to come here Wednesday.
Can't block the pores.
Right.
I mean, like, hurry up.
Yeah. Shot back.
Yeah.
Porous pavement is, you know, still somewhat relatively new. You don't see it a lot, and that is basically because you have to have the right application for it. If you have drainage issues and the soils will support drainage, then it's a great product and you should use it. But where we're here, we're all in heavy clay. The water's not gonna go through it because it has no place to go. So, it really doesn't matter if we're using porous pavement, asphalt or concrete. Concrete's gonna give you the best life expectancy and it'll stay consistent with the rest of the walks.
At the cheapest cost.
At reasonable cost.
And that was the other thing? It would look very different connecting up and working up with the others.
Yeah, well, the, the thing that Chris was bringing up, um, yes, because it's por- you know, porous pavement needs to drain through like a strainer per se. Over time, the dirt clogs the pores. It needs to kind of be washed, back flushed and vacuumed to pull that dirt back out to let it do what it was originally intended for. And that was to allow water to trend through it.
Okay, do we get a lot of flooding over there or is it just because?
There's a balance. Did you see the balance over there? We get, there's a trough there.
Yeah, so are we gonna raise, have it concrete higher or, and then raise that area?
Really, we can't do that. The reason for that ponding water in that area is because there is a swell that was developed in there. We've already removed part of it because of some of the other work we did, especially when we, uh, redid the employee entrance sidewalk that actually was raised to make it more of a level plane instead of a, a jump, if you will. Uh, it had a real weird angle to it. There is a natural swell to get rid of runoff. So we would have to try and meet the current condition so that water would cheat across it. You know, real quick, you know, without going out there and really doing a, a study of it, but I believe that's what we'd have to do. Water only backs up for a short period of time until the ponds out front take care of it and drains out. We have to control how fast the water leaves the site. And we're, and that is dictated by M.D.A. because we follow up to the M.D.A. regularly.
Thank you.
No problem.
Jody, the other part of this is, when we talked about this was the security part and, and using that door. And one of the reasons we wanted to eliminate the deputies using it was because of the accountability. You got the quote.
And, so I did email you all the quote, the quote from Tyco, um, also known as ADT. This quote is large. Did you guys print it out? To wire the door, and this does not include the, uh, actual electrician to come in and do the wiring, the, um, it would cost $7,217.81. And that would redo those, the two doors, the sheriff's door and the outside door with a keypad, which would eliminate, uh, the sheriffs having a key. It would register on the report of who's coming in and out of the building. And the, um, yeah, the code could be changed at any time. And the guy actually said you could put hundreds of different codes. Each sheriff could have their own code so you knew exactly who it is. The biggest thing is when someone leaves and it's, you know, you can very easily delete that out so that they can no longer get in. The other building, we still don't know how many people have keys to the old building. And that's the keys that are being used now to get in here, so. I'm not gonna make a recommendation either way. I was quite surprised at the cost. I think it was 4,500 the last time we got a quote, and so it's gone up quite a bit.
I really would have a hard time spending over $7,000. I know. Something like this.
Well, and the thing is, they can do the same thing on this door for $524. And the sheriffs could use the same doors everybody else. It would only cost the township $500. That's where I have an issue. That's, that's the stopping point for me. I'm, I'm really, I agree with Ron that there should be a sidewalk over there anyways, and I don't have a problem with that. But if we're gonna eliminate the security thing, we want to know who's going in and out, we could easily, for $500, we would know everybody, including the deputies that come in and out. We didn't know exactly who's coming and going.
That's one thing I have a problem. I mean, it's the sheriff. They're our security. So I mean, if we can't trust them coming in and out, we have cameras all the way down the hall, I don't know what other security we need, honestly. They're our security. They're our police force. That, to me, it doesn't matter which police officer's walking in this building, that's our, that's our police. I want them to come in here as much as possible, facility, to do their reports, change out, make sure they check on everything, out the door they go. So I, I, that's the only thing, I'm not so concerned with the security aspect of it.
Okay, so then, the next thought would be, because those guys that are stationed here, absolutely, we know them, we know them when they're in the building and all that. It's the ones that we don't know that are coming from all over the place just to use the bathroom. So, if we switched out to a keypad and the only ones that actually had a key to that door were the ones that are working here. And if they're just coming in to use the bathroom, they come in the employee entrance with a keypad, with a code, and we'll get rid of those keys. So then there's only, let's say, 10 keys out there to sheriffs.
Now, how are the, the ones that come in here just to use the bathroom, how are they getting in and out? I mean, how?
They have keys.
They have the scheme?
No, they have keys. That, that door was rekeyed to the same as the old building. Actually, the lock was taken off the old building and put on that, this door over here. And so, it's whoever had keys.
And I still, I don't understand the problem with them having the keys to come in the building.
You, you said yourself, I think it was two months ago, the only ones that should be in this building are our deputies.
Their deputies, their sheriff deputies.
Right, but ours for our community, not the ones that are just driving by, not the ones-
However specified, just ours, sheriff's department.
Actually, that's exactly what you said. You said only our deputies that are assigned to Lennox Township, those are the only ones that should be-
We have other deputies that come in to meet with our deputies here also.
And I agree with that. I actually feel that any deputy that's driving by should be able to use the bathroom in here. I mean, it's a substation for them.
Well, I've never brought up a security issue with our sheriffs coming in this building, I can tell you that.
But then, every deputy has a key, every deputy in the county, and deputies come and go, they quit, they get fired, whatever, they still have a key because it's on their personal key rings. And Deputy Corey actually told me that. He says they go out, they make them for everybody. So even if we were to change the lock now, there's still gonna be 300 keys out there because they gonna make them. That's their policy, that's what they do. Putting a keypad pad in eliminates that. It's gone, it's done, no more. We have total control. And I understand they're deputies and, and I understand that we do need to trust them 100%. But there's still a little bit of a concern.
Our deputies, every door is locked and clearly, there's cameras up, I don't know what they, what could happen.
Am I allowed to speak during this thing?
Yeah, sure, go ahead. You want, you want to say something, go ahead.
I-
Go to the mic, please, if you would.
I'm, uh, gotta agree that it shouldn't make any difference what deputy comes in here. I mean, the man is hired to protect us and, and serve us, and, uh, the cost of the keypad sounded astronomical to me. I mean, uh, boy, I would sure want you to do a whole bunch of shopping before you went with that company.
Yeah, I think we all agree that.
And isn't really worth it? I mean, these are the people that we, we call and beg to come and help us when we're in trouble. Um, I don't know, just as, as a resident, that just seems foolish to me to spend that kind of money for a keypad, um, when a, a touchpad, you say that they're giving keys out. Hell, they can give out their code for the touchpad, just as easy. So, and if your, your doors are locked, I mean, I, I invite them to come to my place all the time because I, I want them to see. That's my view, says.
And just so you know, Mr. Gaskell, I'm not asking for the $7,000 one. It's one keypad and one door, which would be around $500, not the 7,000. I agree with, the, the 7,000 was way too much.
You have something? Cam?
Yeah, something that I can add that may help without making anything more confusing. Um, last fall, we were asked to completely reinteriorize the old building and change the locks on that. Uh, we had a local locksmith here. I had him look at that door, you know, hallway there, asked him what he thought it would take to put a simple keypad there. Uh, he looked at it, he looked it over and he goes roughly, right around $500. But that's not a system that will log and keep track who's coming and going.
Now, see, that, that wouldn't be a bad alternative if you had a-
If that's, you know, if, if that's still an issue, you will be stuck and tied to ADT with their system. If it is not, and you still just want to do a keypad, eliminate the keys, you could go with the simple keypad actuator that the local locksmith did.
And if we were worried about people having that code in the future, we just change the code to-
Change that, well, you can change it every day if you'd like. Uh, I don't know exactly how many codes the system he referred to held, but I'm sure there's variations of that.
Oh, I had no idea. I had no thoughts of even giving every single one of them.
Right, I, no, I understand, like, you know, and with the cameras, you know, we can see who's coming and going. If it's a problem, change the code.
Kind of like the, like the restrooms they do at private marinas and stuff?
Sure.
They just have those codes and every week, pretty much, they change the code and only the people that have their boat at the marina are given that code.
And that's what we talked about that when we looked at this in 2011. We looked at that one also. But this one hooks to our system, that one is a standalone and doesn't, uh, much like what the fire department has.
Same. Exacssation, too. Yeah, yeah, that would be similar, I guess, you know, so.
I don't have a problem with that either. It's just a matter of getting a little more control on where the keys are at and who has them.
You know, I think that could be made very easy. If that's the case, if we're looking at around $500 or, or to put a cap of $600 and the sidewalk approval, we get everything done. Sidewalk and that, at that price, it's done, it's over, the sheriffs are satisfied, we're satisfied on entry, it's a done deal. So, if anybody's got any other options or-
I don't have a written quote from this gentleman. It was just something he did while he was here doing all the work. If you'd like, I'll recontact him and get a written quote.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be good with that. Jody, I, I mean, it's the security here into the building. You're comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, like I said, because I, I did not expect this board to approve that 7,000 when I got, when I got the quote. I was like, ugh. Last time it was 45. I'm pretty sure it was, it was right around 45. You know, that was a little bit more doable at the time. This is outrageous and I wouldn't expect this board to approve it.
If we could approve the sidewalk, get the last quote and up to like $600?
Yeah, I like the idea of that keypad because, um, if you, if they have keys, like you said, Chris, if, if, if a deputy is fired or leaves or whatever, they still have those keys.
They're human.
Yeah.
And Chris Corey had told us before that they would go out and make 10 of them and hand them out, and then they'd go make 10 more and-
Each one would make 10 more?
Yeah, and he said, and then that one would go make, and he said, I couldn't even tell you how many keys are out.
Well, heck, as a board member, I was required to turn in my keys from the other building. Yeah.
That's the part that scares me, is that nobody knows how many keys are out there or who has them.
Yeah, I like the keypad.
I, I'm comfortable with that. If we can get that keypad out there for $600 or less and that sidewalk, then I would be comfortable with that, long as Jody is.
No, that's what I, I said, I'm, I'm good with that. My biggest was how many keys are out there? We don't even know who and where.
Um, shoot, I, I'm always thinking, go ahead and make a motion to, to approve the sidewalk, but table the keypad, because it's not gonna happen till sidewalks start anyways, until Cam gets a quote on that. So, all right, so I'll-
Get a quote on it?
Well, it's not gonna be done before next month anyways, so we'll have to get a quote on it. So I'll make a motion that we approve. Do you have the exact amount, Jody, for the sidewalk? $2,100 for a sidewalk for the sheriff's entrance?
Support.
Motion made by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer and doctor. Any other questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
Just real quick to add to the motion, the work, that quote was only good as long as work was done in the spring after the frost leaves.
Everybody understand that?
Sorry. Frost leaves.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Cam, you'll get your quote, please, sir.
I'll get a call tomorrow.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Directional sign request? Everybody, I believe there's two samples in total. Make your pick.
Good evening. Bob, I know you did a great job working on, on the sign. This is, you won't be able to see the writing because it's real light and some pencil, but this is basically the size. And then the two samples that you have would be what I just did on the computer. Um, sample one was, um, what Bob had come up with and Nancy, I think, worked on it too. And after discussion with Ron and Cam, we came up with sample number two for safety reasons. If there was ever, um, a resident or an ex-employee, and all they'd have to do is sit in the parking lot and watch us all come out and we'd all be gone. So, for safety reasons.
So you're, you're saying just, so we're just saying that that's the entrance? We're not saying that this is employee entrance?
Yeah, take anything off over there that says employee entrance.
That makes sense.
And ha- and the door will be locked, so if anybody does walk up to the door, if they don't have a, a swipe card, they're not gonna get in.
Yeah, and putting employee entrance with public on the same piece of paper, I think, could be confusing.
Could be a little confusing.
You just have an arrow, main entrance, all township business, cut in your eye.
Right. It would be white background with, uh, like a navy blue writing. Its directional signs, I was told, is white and blue. Um, there's two prices in there, one from a catalog. This catalog that I get all the time, um, that's $153, but M&amp;B Graphics worked with Bob for $50, same size.
So $50, pick the sample, done.
Correct. And the no smoking sign that we have, uh, at that entrance, the north entrance, we got at M&amp;B Graphics.
Okay.
So also a local company?
Yep.
Stay local, yeah. And it's more than half the, less than half the price of a catalog one, yeah, so.
Any questions regarding them?
I understand not saying employee entrance, so instead, shouldn't there maybe be a sign that says no public?
I don't, I don't think-
That this is not a public entrance?
This says all township business, directed in arrow that way.
I just know, you know, even though we've, it said, it is set as employee entrance, everyone comes in first, every-
We can try to see how it goes with this, this one sign.
For only $50, yeah.
And then see if we have to do something else, because you're still gonna get people that are gonna walk up. They're just so used to it. Unless they're used to coming in that front door, no matter what we do. So, I would say let's just go with the one sign for now. We can always do something else.
Right, and I could take that for a while, the one sample that says Main Entrance, All Township Business, with the arrow, put it on the door in case somebody does walk up there. That would work.
And Bob, you had mentioned taking one of those posts from across the parking lot? For example, the one that has the sheriff parking over there, since they don't need it over there, bring that over. Cam, does that sound like something that would work good? So that, there's no cost to that, then, because that's already there. Just move it over.
Then we can move it wherever we want, right?
Do we get it from around here?
No, it's a big cement block that just sits on the sidewalk.
Oh, okay. They're not sure exactly where it would sit. You can't have it right by where the smoking can thing is, because if the car's parking right there, you're not going to see it until you're out of your car. So, it has to be farther up the sidewalk, so maybe where that first tree is would work.
Yeah, we can play with it, move it around.
Exactly.
So, parking lots, y'all, looks.
Yep.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you, Bob, for doing that. And Janat, for looking up the catalog.
I make the motion that we authorize an ordering of a sign from M&amp;B Graphics for $50 for Main Entrance, All Township Business.
Support. Motion by Trustee Turgey, supported by Clerk Keating. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We covered the north entrance lock request. Cam's getting the quote on that. Planning Commission and zoning Board of Appeals training session.
Hold on, go back, because the north entrance lock request was actually to have that employee entrance locked all the time, which is a, which is a programming, and I still didn't get the price from ADT on that.
Okay, fine.
So, that can be tabled until next month.
Motion. Motion to table the north entrance lock request until next month, when Jody can get a quote.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keating. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Now, let her read. Planning Commission and zoning Board of Appeals training session.
After reading this numerous times, I'm still not quite sure if it's $320 for the course before or after Nicklin's sample pays $150.
I don't have any of that. Was it on email, or...
I would suggest then just tabling it, contacting them tomorrow for clarification purposes, and do a mid-month on it.
Yeah, because from what Pat mentioned at the planning commission, he said something about the insurance would pay up to $150 per person or something, but that's as far as we got with the discussion, I...
Okay, and so that's what he said in his email, and I did forward this to all of you. It says that it would roughly cost about $320 per person for the course, and it's seven different courses that we would have to take. And he said Nicklin's sample paid $150 per attendee, but the way it's written, I'm not sure if the 320 is before or after.
Right, and then we still have the issue of paying the members to be here.
Correct. Need a vote. Make a motion that we table the Planning Commission and zoning Board of Appeals. Waiting for more information. Patrick Mumper.
Motion by Clerk Keating, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion tabled. Table, I'm sorry. New business. Township law firm selection.
Mr. Super. I will, at this point, step down from the diocese here so that the board can deliberate it over this matter. I'll stay in the room if, and if, in case there's any questions, but if you would like, I'd be happy to step out in the hallway as well, if any member of the board would feel more comfortable with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I've got a question. I don't know if anybody else has ever asked it or not, but I've, I've not been to all the meetings, but I've been to a considerable number of them, and I want to ask you people, is it necessary to have attorney here every meeting? Is that something that's law or something? Because I've been to so many of these meetings, and the attorney has never done nothing but just sit there, and we're paying for them every time. Is there, is there some way that on the meeting nights, the agenda that you would need an attorney that you would inform? I mean, I just look into ways of, you know, to cut the costs around here a little bit, and I've yet to hear an attorney say anything. Is it law that we have attorney every night?
Mr. Gaskell, I've been here 25 years. I've been here 25 years. No, it is not law that you have to have your attorney. What we normally did, if there was going to be an issue that we felt we needed legal counsel there, then we would tell them ahead of time, please be there at our meeting. But no, there, it was not until, gosh, I don't know, probably four or five years ago that it got started that the attorney was here for every meeting. But no, there is no law, as far as I know, that they have to be here. And as, but they've always, if we request them, they've always said yes, that they would be here for us.
If you requested them to come to a meeting, or...
If we felt there was a need, that we needed legal advice during that meeting, then they, we would call them and say, we think you should be here to sit with our board for any questions that we have that we may not be able to answer. And instead of having to wait for a month to get that answer from our attorney to tell the people the next month, they would sit in on the diocese. But no, I don't think there's any law that says we have to be here.
But we have one here every meeting now, am I right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and that's something that you folks have all agreed on, and that's how we do it, or it's just been automated?
No, I actually agree with you. I, I don't like that we spend the money to have a lawyer here every meeting. I don't like it at all. But it's just, that's the way it's been for four or five years.
I don't have a problem with the attorney not being here at every meeting.
Yeah. You know, we're worried about a sidewalk that, you know, somebody could really get hurt on, and, and yet we have, I mean, I haven't heard Terry Welch say much of anything for a couple of years. Mike Apple.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, everybody got a copy of my submission? I'm sorry it came so late, but it was, I've been working on it for the last couple of days, and in fact, one of the calls I received was just this afternoon. I went, I guess I'll start, and then you guys can, I don't know, somebody else wants to start, but I went through each proposal, page by page, and I made a list, and compared the different items. That's the first part of my, my letter here, whatever you want to call it. The high points of each, each firm, their connections with who, who they worked with, who they have, you know, whatever. And then, when I talked to these people, which would be Mark Hackel, Judge Mastaroni, Judge Swetolski, a resident, Judge Leduke, and Dan Aaron, what I would say when I talked to them was, we interviewed three law firms for our township. These are the names, these are the law firms. What can you tell me about each, each firm? And to the best of my knowledge, that the comments I have there are what they told me, you know, because I was at work trying to write down little points and stuff. My personal feeling is Mr. Joppich has done a wonderful job. It's great. I do like his work. But myself, and we've seen a lot of officials, too, especially Mark Hackel, we're pushing Macomb County with everything. Now, we're trying to support Macomb County. My choice is Macomb County attorney, not only because it's within the county, but because of the connections those attorneys would have. They work directly with those judges, directly with the county road commission, directly with, you know, everybody in the county. So, I agree with all the different statements, and my choice, my first choice, is O'Reilly Rensilio. I think you get the best bang for the buck there. They did put an option out there to either a contract or per hour or whatever, so it's something else we can look at, so... For now, I don't know if anybody else has any other comments?
You have a comment?
Uh, you have a comment?
Back when we had an issue with Terry Welch that needed to be looked at, and we went to our insurance company and asked them to give us the name of an attorney to do, in fact, we're going to talk about that under closed session tonight. We were giving the name of Steve Joppich because they said he is number one when it comes to zoning issues, that he was the best out there. Over the last few months, and I didn't know Steve, in fact, I didn't know any of these people before we went into this interview process. Anyway, I've been very impressed with Steve's work. I have been very impressed with some of the stuff that we're going to talk about later in the closed session that he has produced for us. One of the things that was brought up in the interview process, and Karen, you're the one that brought this up, you asked a question on a particular instance and asked for each one of them to give. I was most impressed with what the Johnson, Joppich, anyway, firm had to say about that, and then again, what, what he has, you know, put forward to us now to actually look at. I was very impressed with all three companies. Didn't have any real issues with any of them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My opinion, first off, I was very disappointed that when we put this out there for proposals that we got three firms to look into us. That was very disappointing to me. Where are the rest of our Macomb County firms? And why did they not try to put in a proposal for it? I feel like Jody does, too, that Mr. Joppich has jumped in, took the ball, and ran, has done for us what he was asked to do, and kind of went into a situation that was not good at the time, was brought into it, and I think he's done a fine job. I, too, would like, would like to keep your business in Macomb County, because I realize that's where we're going to be going to for court and different things. The one firm has no landfill experience at all, so I'm not comfortable with that, because we do have issues there, so that was my opinion. I was very disappointed that we had three firms to choose from.
Okay, thank you.
This was very eye-opening for me. All three firms, as far as I'm concerned, I was equally impressed. I've never had to hire a lawyer before, so I really don't know the process for it, so I said, listened very tightly, made a lot of notes. I'm almost, I almost feel bad because I'm biased towards Mr. Joppich, because that's really the only lawyer that I've worked with. The Macomb County thing, I do agree with everybody that it would be nice to have someone out of Macomb County, but I also agree with Ms. Imus that we got to go with who's going to be best for us, and I'm impressed with what I've seen from Mr. Joppich. That's kind of the way I'm leaning.
So, you go on.
I'd like to thank all three companies for bringing us proposals. Appreciate the interview time they spent with us. That's all I have to comment on this time.
Now, whether anybody else agrees, Janat, I would like to appoint O'Reilly Rensilio as our township law firm. That's an informal motion.
Thank you. Any support?
I'm sorry. Robert's rules of order, there's a motion on the floor right now.
There's no support for a motion.
Then you have to say the motion dies before Mr. Gaskell speaks up.
Lord Roberts rules of order. We follow Robert's rules as a guideline, not in total, but there's, there's no motion. It's dead. There was no support for the motion. Yes, sir.
I'm really shocked that we can't get some support for a Macomb County law firm that has a record that these people put down. And I, I mean, the gentleman that has been sitting in for this short period of time is, these guys probably are all qualified, but I certainly don't want my money spent outside. I mean, I'm adamant about that, and I'm really shocked at the board. We've got a lot of growing to do here. We've got the landfill, we've got something new coming. What I read, the Rensilio operation is big, covers all aspects. You're not going to have to be, have new people that are, or extra attorneys hired for specialty programs that would, what might come up. I mean, as, as a businessman, like one of your constituents said, the best bang for your buck. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying there's anything bad about anybody else, but I'm concerned about how much of my money is going to be spent outside. And I ask the people that are here, that live in this Lennox, I mean, I, I'm amazed. I, I can't tell you how, how much I'm against an outside vendor, if you... Not a better word.
Thank you, sir. Other comments?
I really wish we had meant to do some more discussion. I'm not just saying, you know, I'm not saying that I want to change my mind or run differently, but I do feel, I wish we had had time to actually sit down as a group and talk about, about each one of our thoughts on these. I know we're all pretty confident when we came in here, but I think more discussion would have done us all some good.
would have done us all some good.
We can still do that. We don't have. This is a very, very important decision.
Yes.
I don't want to, like I said at the beginning, I didn't realize we were going to do it tonight because I thought we were going to try to discuss it. So we could do it at mid-month, but, you know, I, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think everybody is pretty well aware of the surmise made of, I just wish that we had spent some time. Did we decide that that motion was dead?
Motion's dead.
Then I will make a motion that we hire Johnson, Rosati, Schultz, and Joppich for legal services.
All support?
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher, deputy clerk.
Churchy?
No.
Boyd?
Aye.
Ottenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Sir?
If I could, I'd just like to, I hope everybody can hear me. Thank you. I'd, I'd just like to thank the board for the decision this evening. It's been a great pleasure and an honor to be serving the township for the past many months. And just, just for the residents and Mr. Gaskill's concern regarding, you know, the, the location of my office, that's true, it is not in Macomb County. However, I'm sitting back there itching to say that as your township attorney, I am now in Macomb County. I am here to serve you. It makes no difference to me what county I'm in. I think I told the board somewhat unjust, but I am, I have a great many of, of strong ties with Macomb County through marriage. My wife is from Macomb County. I have, she has 13 brothers and sisters. I have relatives all over Macomb County. Our firm represents many Macomb County communities in an insurance defense standpoint. We've appeared in the Macomb County Circuit Court many, many times, handled many cases in counties, and we're here regularly. So, and I'm, I'm just very honored and pleased to be here on a regular basis with Lennox Township. And I really look forward to working with the township and its residents, you know, to earn your trust and, and do good service to the township. And I will speak on it later on in the agenda. I think I've spoken at every meeting except the last one that I've attended was the first one that I didn't speak at all. And I said that was a, a first for me. So I look forward to it and look forward to getting to know more people here. In the past many months, I've gotten to know a lot of people, a lot of members of the township staff and administration, and feel as though, I, I feel as though I've clicked with, with the community and it's, it's great and I look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Scott here, I'd like to thank you for your proposal. I don't know if anybody's here from Seabird Galaski or not, but you'd like to speak, Mr. Scott?
Just briefly, if I could, on behalf of O'Reilly-Rancilio, thank you for your consideration. We appreciate it. I congratulate Mr. Joppich and Johnson-Rosati, a great firm. I've worked with them and against them. Have the highest respect for them and I appreciate all your time and your consideration. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I don't know if there's anybody here for him. Fire Department Automatic External Defibrillation AED Purchase Request.
Good evening, everyone. I sent the board a letter on February 20th requesting approval to purchase two new AEDs for the fire department. One will go in the new apparatus that is scheduled to be delivered next month and the other one would be for the grass truck. Currently, the grass truck is on the road probably every day that I work. That's a truck, the vehicle I use for going to all the meetings all over our county and out of county. Anyway, we really truly believe that we need to have, have one of that vehicle since a lot of times, not once in a while, but a lot of times that vehicle responds directly to calls within our township. So at this time, I presented everybody with a copy of the proposal that Jeff was so gracious and helped me obtain. So this time I'm requesting approval to purchase two AEDs from Physio Control in the amount of $3,753.
That seems like actually less than we spent on one, doesn't it?
Two bags for the buck, basically. You get a better, better price the more you buy. When we originally purchased them, what, about eight, 10 years ago, Jeff, we bought for four or five departments at once, so we got a really good deal.
The last? It was for Kim's truck and it was a refurbished one, wasn't it?
I think, I, I don't know.
That just seems to ring a bell.
They're nodding their head. Okay. They're nodding their head back there. Yes, that's what it was.
Any of the grass truck doesn't have one right now?
No, does not.
This is, this is going back to my days with EMS. You guys, is that a licensed vehicle for medical responses?
No, it's not, it's not an MFR vehicle.
Okay, I was just curious.
The new engine will be an MFR vehicle along with the two rescue trucks.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two AEDs for $3,753 for the fire department.
Support?
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Medical outreach clinic storage agreement renewal, McLaren?
Yes, I've sent you all a copy of the annual lease agreement for renewal. We are not raising any, any fees this year, raising the rent because last year we did. And so this is just a formality. So right now I'm requesting that the board approve the renewal of the lease agreement with McLaren-Macomb.
Danny, does this money just go into your budget?
Yes, it does.
Part of your budget?
Yep. It pretty much covers all of our utility operational costs for Station 2.
Yeah, I imagine it would.
Make a motion that we approve the lease agreement with Mount Lemmons Regional Medical Center, DBA McLaren-Macomb for rental of Station Number 2 Bay at $650 per month.
Support?
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Robinson.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just handed Chris pictures that TJ had brought to the planning commission.
Okay. TJ Enterprises LLC, renewal for mining permit. Thank you for being so patient, sir. Appreciate it. For renewal of his mining permit, you have anything like that yet, sir?
No.
Or is it a recommendation, I believe?
Board has any questions for me, I'd have to answer, but so, been business as usual.
There have been no complaints or?
No, no complaints on file or I haven't received any.
Actually, when out there, Mr. Hyman and I went out there and drove through your facility a couple of weeks ago and not that I knew what I was looking at because I'm still learning all this stuff, but it looked like it was pretty clean, well-run, there wasn't no junk laying around and I don't think it was very, very professionally run. I was actually, actually impressed by it.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll just make a comment at the planning commission level. Like I said, we approved the special hand-use permit and questions were asked about any completion date in mind and the answer was that we think there may be about halfway through. Depends what the economy does. You know, it has picked up somewhat. They said possibly five to six more years. We asked about if there was any complaints, asked how the drainage system was working that was put in and told it was, it was working great. We also asked, Pepper's ex to please check on some of the neighbors. We have an elderly neighbor that lives on, they're right on 32 and want to make sure that she's, they touch base with her to make sure that she's not getting like a lot of sand in her windows and, you know, help her out a little bit. And they were comfortable with that. Chuck asked about the, how, how the measurements are based and it's yard-based and it's taken directly off of the invoices. So like I said, we had no, no complaints that we know about. Oh, I asked about the sand on the north end because that sand is real, real fine. It's almost like powder. They said that because they're done working over there, it's been covered and it's grown over more so they don't get as much blowing in that area. Is that kind of covered?
That's correct, yeah. It's not complete to the shape, but now we have all the material out. It's been covered by some heavier material, grown vegetation until we get everything dug out and will be shaped then, but.
Yeah, because I know that, what that area did create a problem before because you drive down 32 and what is that up ahead? And that's what that stuff was, was it's, it's like baby powder.
That, that area's been covered. You've seen the pictures, most of the piles have vegetation out of now, other than the fresh mining piles. And we're trying to limit the amount we pull out at a time just to eliminate some of the blowing sand. I'd like to think the pond's halfway dug. The shape is probably more than halfway, but if we had the same economy we did when we started, we'd only have a couple more years left. But based on the last few years, it's a couple over that.
It just seems that this turned off, it was supposed to be a five-year.
It was a five to seven years and it was year eight, but the last four have been pretty, yeah.
Were you guys applying to the foreground project up there? Were they buying through you or?
They had started, but the trucking company that was trucking on there purchased their own sand gravel because of the old Ruby Tree Farm, bought the tree farm.
Oh, okay.
So it's tough to compete when they.
That's all right because they're done now up there anyway, so.
Pretty much. Can remind you, my contractor, that there is local sand for his sidewalk.
Make a motion that we renew the sand and gravel mining operation permit for 2003, yeah, 2003, 2013 to TJ Enterprises.
Support?
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Ottenbacher. Other questions or discussion? Although.
Thank you for your continued cooperation and help.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Receptionist wages.
I don't have anything in front of you because I didn't know what was in front of you. As I told you, we received 250 resumes for a position of receptionist and the assistant to my office. It was to say we had no idea we were going to have that many and with the busy time with taxes and everything, we, we did muster, I think we interviewed 30 of them. We did hire a receptionist, as I told you, under my report. Her husband is shocked that she's working and doesn't know what she's working for, but we need to set, we didn't put anything in the paper at the time about wages and that, so we need to decide because I want to interview at least five of these that we did talk to bring them back, but I want to be able to give them, when I call them, an amount of what we can give them because some of them are already making, say, $15 an hour. And surprisingly enough, I said, there's no way I know that we can compete with that. And a couple of them are driving to Detroit, Auburn Hills. One lady is on the road three hours a day. She said that she would take a cut in pay and the fact that we have insurance and we would be close, she would be close to home. We had several that were from Lennox. We tried to steer clear of anything too far away, Richmond Township, City of Richmond. Anyway, we need to have, before I start calling these to get somebody back in here to interview, we need to decide what we're going to do as far as wage.
But first we need the receptionist.
First off, I'm going to make a comment. I don't think anybody should ever be hired unless the wage is agreed upon. I don't know how somebody gets hired without knowing what their pay's going to be. I've, I've, I've never heard of such a thing.
Well, during the process, she was told it would be more than, it would be at least minimum wage and it would not exceed $10 an hour. And also that 10 was the very top end and without experience in it, that, that probably not what she would end up with. So it was her decision. I agree, I wouldn't start a job not knowing what the wage is.
What is, you know, what minimum wage is right now? I don't even know.
$7.40. I thought it was $7.45.
Well, and it's also supposedly, supposedly going up, so.
Yeah, they wanted to go up to eight or nine, but yet that's not going to happen, so. That's up the road. I, I think the first 90 days we should go with a very low amount and then we could go up a little bit after 90 days possibly, but if we started higher, that means we're going to have to keep going higher, so I don't know how. They're all aware, everybody's been told when they came in, that we have not here in this building had a raise in seven years. And so they're very much aware and they still keep coming and calling and saying, have you filled this position?
You have a recommendation where you, where have you thought about? Would you like to start with that?
Yeah, it's the board's, you know, I've told them, there are people in here that aren't making $12 an hour for the receptions. Like Jody said, I think we need, you know, minimum wage to, say, $10 is what we had told for the receptionists. In the past, have we, after the 90 days, have we increased? I know that after 90 days, they would be able to have benefits.
Right. No, the only thing that was done differently was Wes LeGreen was, in his, it was a dollar an hour raise if he passed the.
Okay. How does everybody feel about $7.50?
I don't know.
Board's, board's decision.
Are we thinking a raise after 90 days?
Well, then, that's what I'm asking. If we're doing that, then I don't mind starting at that, but I, you know, I couldn't remember if we've ever done that before. I don't recall ever having that. Different times, different situations, so I don't think we can, we.
that this person would be going into the building department.
Okay. Basically, learn how to do things in the building department, so she could help, not actually leave this position and go into the building department. Just learn, just like Robin did. Robin could do...
Except she would be actually learning it, so that when the building department ladies are ready to retire, there's someone that knows.
Right. So, who's going to oversee her in the building department? She's not in the building department. Right, but she just said she's going to learn all the building department, so who's going to, who's going to train her, and who's she going to be under?
Nancy, right? You know?
That makes sense.
Yeah. Or whichever employee is showing her, asking her what to do. Because Nancy could be out, and Carol could need some help with something and say, can you do this or that?
So, right now, in her position, she answers to the treasurer's office, and then when she's, obviously, when she's helping out in the building department, the building department will tell her what to do, and she would...
But I still think she's under the, like, under the treasurer's.
Ultimately.
It's basically just learning and helping, just like before, learning and helping in all the different departments.
So, I'll go with $7.50? With the potential for a 50 cent raise after 90 days?
I'm, I think it's fair.
I'll make a motion that we set the receptionist wages at $7.50 an hour, with the potential for 50 cent raise after 90 days to be determined by the treasurer's office.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Assistant to treasurer wages.
Okay, this one, I'm going to put in my two cents, because this one has a little bit more experience. We ask for someone that had bookkeeping slash accounting. A lot of those that applied actually either had associate degrees or their bachelor's degree in accounting. Couple of them actually have already had the SNA, they would, they would walk it tomorrow and start. We're not going to be able to, I don't think, either one of those ladies, because they are higher up. I'd like to see the wage for this one somewhere between $10 and $12 an hour, based on who is chosen after the second set of interviews, depending on their experience.
How many hours is this person working? Is this full-time, table?
And what they would be doing is, they would be strictly, the receptionist right now is not handling money. All she's doing is people that come in for burn permits, people that are coming in for dump cards, answering the phone, directing, directing traffic when they come in. Today, we had quite a situation with trying to order some supplies. She's trying to order office supplies, but she will not handle money. This person that's going to be my assistant will handle the payment of the water bills, any permits that come in that have, any, any money, tax dollars, any of the building permits that have money, she would be handling, helping me.
Receptionist also will be working hand-in-hand with Kim for the park reservations and such.
That's another one of the duties.
Being that this person is handling the money, do they have to be bonded?
Okay, yes.
Try it $10 an hour, I mean, let's see what happens. I'd hope they have $10.
Say with that a motion?
Okay, I made the motion when we started the wages of the assistant to the treasurer at $10 an hour.
You?
Are we saying the same as we did with the receptionist after 90 days? A possible increase or not?
You guys think about that?
Are we worried about losing this person to a higher-paying job shortly down the road? That maybe we shut up into 11 or 12 after, not 90 days, obviously, to $12, but let her know the potential to go up to $12 within, say, a year? I'm just worried, get her in there, get her all trained, get her bonded, and something better comes along, and she's out the door.
Right.
Well, like Ron has said many times, we train them, we don't pay very much, and something else comes along, they're going to leave us.
Agreed.
But we can't bring somebody in and start them at something when we've got people in here that haven't had raises in many years.
And they know they're coming in.
They've been told right up front coming in, and that hasn't deterred the emails, the phone calls, and...
Those benefits. Same medical benefits.
Benefits, yes.
Plus, there's nothing out there. There's just nothing out there.
I don't know how would we word that, would we word it, I mean, that we, that wage will be between $10 and $12, potential for raise in the first year, or... I don't think $12 is unreasonable if this person works out very well. Now, I'm going to speak to this, because I can't, I can't quiet anymore, but $12 is not unreasonable. $10 is not unreasonable. These were things that were, been discussed in the past, so I'm blue in the face that we're talking an amount here that for 32 hours a week is not unreasonable. And, but what's unreasonable, we have some people that are making money that is unreasonable, too low for the positions that they're in, and with no raises given, and things of that nature. It should be fair across the board, and it's not. We have people doing multiple tasks that are not being compensated. We have departments that are going without staffing. We have departments with overstaffing. That doesn't make sense. And this has been taking place, and everybody knows it. And it was happening before when we had the other assessing department. We had too many people in place, things weren't getting done. We tried moving employees, and it was nothing but a nightmare, a nightmare. Everybody resisted change at that time, and didn't want to hire any more people to address the problem. Complete nightmare. I'm asking that people should be paid a reasonable, fair wage for the work they're doing, be compensated accordingly across the board. I mean, we have, we have people, Wes LeGrand will be certified. What did he start at, Kim?
I believe he started at $9 or $10 an hour.
$9 an hour to run equipment, to drive dump truck, to drive our tractors, to work outside the heat, outside the cold, go for a certification, $9 an hour. You have to add in the benefits. There's, there's people in other communities around here that get no medical benefits, and that is a huge chunk of this. You have to add in the paycheck at the end of the week, if I can live on it. I don't disagree, but you have to look at the big picture. I would love to pay everybody more in here. I think everybody more that does enough work to earn those wages, I just, you have to look at the big picture. There's, the money's just not there. When we, when we're paying for medical benefits that other communities aren't even getting, to pay a decent wage is, it's tough to do. Sometimes I think we spend too much money up here.
And that's the thing, if you, if you, we have to weigh it out. This is how much money was brought in, this is how much money is going out. Can we afford? Can we afford? As Chris said, I would love to give everybody a raise.
Absolutely. I think everybody deserves a raise.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. So, with that said...
I think everybody needs to be compensated accordingly to what's going on, and I'd be happy in our next policy procedures meeting to go over that with everybody, and show them what's going on.
Right now, we're talking about the treasurer's wage. Did you?
I just mentioned, I just suggested 10, 10, but I don't know what to do after that. I don't know if we should say after 90 days or after a year. Because this is, you know, it's a new position, we don't know how much work is actually to be done there.
First, and another point I'd like to bring up, too, I think especially when it comes to hiring, and we also talked about resigning, that when we determine to hire, I think the board should hire the person. They should be brought to the board's attention. Person we're hiring before we hire them, I think a wage should be determined, everything should be set in stone before that person's hired. I, I still think that's out of line to hire somebody without a wage set in stone and not at the board's approval.